I'd like to call a meeting to order. Clay Township Board of Trustees, please stand for the flood. (noise) The pledge of allegiance here. (noise) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for coming, everybody. The person's online for this M R meeting here. Boy, that floor came out nice, didn't it? First time I saw it. Good job, guys. And, let's see, oh, we got a few guests. I got Joe and Jennifer Tenetts from the D N R back there, and Lieutenant Paul Reed and Matt from Sheriff Marine Patrol. Welcome, guys. I'd like to press on. Roll call, please.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
He's absent.
Sandy Kupel.
Absent excuse. Okay, we do have a quorum. And, oh, I forgot to announce Justin Westmiller. You're not like a guest anymore.
I just said that. Mike, I'm not a guest anymore.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I see you every day. You're our county emergency manager, so I thought, oh, I forgot him. Okay, bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the bill's payable in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Very none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes, I'm here.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And next, I'd like to make motion to amend the agenda to add new business number ten, Colbert, Starville, and Holland. Colbert.
You're making the motion?
I am making the motion.
I will support that motion.
We have support. Any discussion? Very none. All in favor of amending the agenda as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes ayes? Motion passes. Okay. Moving right along, next thing we have on our agenda is, we're having a discussion about high water. Everyone knows it's high, and like I've mentioned countless, countless meetings, well, four or five months ago, I said we are going to have high water, and it's here. And ultimately, it's up for the people to protect their own private property. But I wanted to give you a rundown, what we've been doing as to date, and things we're trying to do. We've had, and we, I'm talking about the Township Board, myself and some other people in the room, we've had numerous meetings with different agencies, while spearheaded by Justin, our emergency manager. But we've been talking to people from the sheriff's office, other county officials, Michigan State Police People, D N R, the Army Corps of Engineers, state legislatures. I've talked to Senator Peters' office, the governor's office, D T E and S E N Co., and I'm sure there's others. So we've been having a lot of meetings and discussions on the issues facing us. And actually, we're working a lot of several different fronts. I'm working with the Harson's Island Homers Association, and Justin, and there's a lot going on. So first of all, and we addressed it here in this room a couple of years ago, and it still holds true, we were successful slowing down the freighters, for the most part. And it's a voluntary slowdown. And I know once in a while, we get a rogue freighter going through, but for the most part, you know, kudos to them. They have slowed down, and they're aware of our situation. The township, we're helping, people help themselves, basically. Yesterday, we just had a shipment today. We're up to one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand sandbags, and sand is, you know, we're trying to supply the sand as we can. And this is actually a direct cost to the township. I actually would like to thank Blue Water Materials, Mark and Sandy, Cordis Brothers, T R Piperzak, Rosa Trucking. They have actually supplied some sand at their own expense to our taxpayers. And my board, at our last meeting, the board allocated to spend thirty thousand dollars on the situation for now. I'm just calling it a pretty good start. And actually, I put in the budget, this next year's budget, a hundred thousand dollars for basic emergencies. Clay Township, we had a meeting last week, and there's an ordinance that I found on the books, I think it was from the mid-seventies, and it's called our Emergency Flood Control Ordinance. And under Article Three, we could call a flood emergency, and how that works, the Township Supervisor calls it. Well, we did on May fourteenth. I told the board that we're calling this as a flood emergency. And part of the order of the flood, we formed a committee, a flood emergency committee, and it consists of myself, Chief Rose, Chief Coach, and John DeBoyer, head of our wire department. And we've been meeting, and we will continue to be meeting, to ask all the questions of like, you know, how are we, how well are we prepared, and all the what-ifs questions we can think of, how are we going to protect our infrastructure, and public safety, sanitation, I mean, just brainstorm things about our sanitation systems, just across the board, and roads, and actually, Justin Westmiller's been in a lot of those, too. So I am confident we're, as a township, we're prepared for anything that Mother Nature can dish off to us, and we're standing and waiting. And again, you know, we're preparing for the worst, but hoping, praying for the best. And I know a lot, there's issues with boat weights, believe me, I feel your pain more than anybody else. I witnessed it and everything else. My view, there's two issues as far as with the border, you know, the problem in the river. A lot of it's education. A lot of voters just don't know. They think the Saint Clair River is like the rest of the Great Lakes, where it's no way a hundred feet off. They don't know about the two-hundred, six-hundred-foot rule. And the other part of it, I'll be quite honest, is enforcement. And I know there's a lot of people out there concerned, your property's being damaged, your property's lost, and docks are being damaged. We get that, believe me. For the educational part of it, we did, with the county's help, we put up five large signs, basically advertising the two-hundred, six-hundred-foot rule. We applied with the D N R for, I can't remember in the original application, five or six buoys, basically, saying with the two-hundred, six-hundred-foot rule on it. They allowed us to put two on the middle channel. And I don't know, this week, we've been trying to do a media blitz. I've been on a couple of different networks, three TV interviews, and I believe I have another one coming up this week, actually. It's not confirmed yet. So we're trying to get the word out as best as we can. My board, I should say, this board, sorry. This board, we also passed a resolution to the county, where it's, it's long and drawn out, a bunch of wherethes and whatfor's, but in the crunch of it, we let it be resolved that, as Stacey said, the Clay Township Board of Trustees has determined that enforcement of the existing boat restrictions is more imperative than ever before to protect the public and prevent devastating property damage resulting from record high waters and high water levels, and request immediate, significantly increased strict enforcement of the Saint Clair County Sheriff's Marine Division of the state and local laws on the Clay Township waterways and adjacent shorelines and bay areas. And we did have a meeting up at the sheriff's office, and we're going around different ideas of what we can do as far as more enforcement. And oh, by the way, the city of Algonack's passing, passed the same resolution. One thing I know, we talked about, is how can we get more boats on the water? I know we talked, I've talked to legislators, trying to get more money to, from like voters' registration, or something like that, that a percentage of the voters' registration goes to enforcement. And in my mind, most of the boats that are coming through here and are causing most of the damage, they're not local to Clay, they're from other places. And that's what I put to them, why should our taxpayers have to burden the cost of patrolling the river when most of the people aren't even from here? And there's a fallacy out there, well, Artie, you know, put a boat out there, they'll make so much money writing tickets. The locals don't see the money from the tickets. Most of that goes to the courts and the judges and probation. We don't see very much money for, where we get, all the tickets we write, eighteen thousand, I think, a year.
Approximately.
Yeah, and that's a whole year of policing. The locals don't see much money. So, yeah, we're asking for more money for enforcement, but like Lieutenant Paul Reed did mention, too, there's other issues, just not money, those resources, try to get more boats out, manpower, and that type of thing. One thing we were talking about is, with the county is doing a blitz one weekend or a couple of days, like, you see where they, you do the tick or click it things, where you drive by, and there's like five police officers out there, and they're checking everyone for seat belts. We do that sort of thing on our rivers. And we were talking about setting up and meeting boats from different municipalities and areas, maybe from Lecombe County and other things, to get more people on the water. One thing we're talking about, well, we're going to try to get our, well, no, we're going to get our police boat out there also. And then, we're even talking about putting a deputy on fireboats, so we can have our fireboat out there with a deputy to do more patrol. And that's the things we're trying to work out right now, as we speak. A lot of people say, ask me, Artie, why can't we make the whole thing no wake? And really, the D N R doesn't have the legislation, the juice and the law, the way the law's set up, to do a temporary no wake. They can enforce, yes, this is no wake, or no, it's not, but they can't do temporary orders. I'm told the only way to do that is from the governor's office. I'm not sure at what point that would happen, but that's the way it works. The governor would have to declare it no wake, and, I mean, I would suggest anything twenty-six and over would be no wake from the head of Russell Island down. But, you know, that's it in a nutshell, what the township's done. I'm going to turn it over to Justin, and he's got a little PowerPoint for you, too.
Yeah, we might want to move some people.
Yeah, you want to steal this?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me shut the lights off.
Need more lights?
No, I'm just kidding. I don't want to put anybody to sleep. We'll have to worry about that.
There you go.
Nice. If this gets too annoying, if this gets too annoying, because it keeps turning off and on.
Will I need to drive?
No, I got it.
Okay.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. So I'm Justin Westmiller, I'm the emergency manager for the county. I like to move around a lot while I talk. So, first off, I took the job in February of this year, and it's May, so it's been a good three months. Right now, as of this morning, we're at five-seventy-seven-point-four, just to kind of give you a baseline of where we are. We are already, we've already set a record for the month of May. We're already about six inches above where they were in nineteen-eighty-six for the month of May. I talked to the Army Corps this morning. We can expect another at least eight inches by the first two weeks of June, okay? So that's where we are as far as water level right now, and what you can expect right up until the first two weeks in June. Now, as we know, every year, the water cyclical rises, goes up and down, it follows that curve, okay? And you can kind of see what they're projecting into June and through July, and will peak sometime in the middle of July, and then start our way back down, okay? But you can expect right around the fifteenth of June, you can look for at least eight more inches, all right? So what does that mean for us right now? That means that water on Harson's Island is definitely going to be over most of the roads, okay? Most of our property on the island, and I say "are" because my family and I have a place on Harson's Island. I grew up here, spending most of my weekends here, spending all of my winter vacations here, so I have a stake in it, too. So you can expect that there will be a lot of property damage, a lot of water damage. Most of the roadways will be covered with water, and that's kind of where we are, okay? I don't say that to scare people. I know a lot of people went through it in eighty-six. It is what it is. But here's the difference between eighty-six and now, and we'll talk about it a little bit in a few slides. But in eighty-six, it took like plus fifty-four inches to cause pretty good flood damage, and now it takes between like plus sixty and plus sixty-two. And what that means is, the water will have to be really high to cause flooding, and then it'll flood a lot, all of a sudden, right? You won't get that gradual flooding, because back in eighty-six, there were a lot of like beachfront homes in the area, like I know Ark Cottage, which was my grandma's place at the time, they had, we had a beach up in front, we didn't have a break wall then. Now, almost everybody on the island has break walls, which is basically mitigation. So what I mean by that is, basically, the water will have to breach everybody's break wall, and then it'll just come flooding in, okay? So it won't gradually flood like it did in eighty-six. It will basically be a big wall of water that comes at one time, okay? And again, I'm not saying this to scare you, you know, basically, we're all a community here. I'm telling you that, because this is what's going to happen, okay? So this is where we are right now. We're at five-seventy-seven-three, the other day when I put this PowerPoint together, we're at five-seventy-seven-four this morning. All right, so this was current water levels. I gave this brief kind of all over the place. So current water levels at Algonack, five-seventy-seven-four, five-seventy-seven-five. Up in Saint Clair, it's at five-seventy-eight-nine, all right, a little higher elevation. Obviously, the water's a little higher there. And then at the Black River, it's five-eighty-point-five. So that's what's going on throughout the county. So this right now, this inundation that you're seeing, is on this lake viewer, and I gave everybody the link, and Artie has this PowerPoint. If you go to that link, you can see, you can click through the different elevations, and when we get to five-seventy-eight-point-two, most of Harson's Island is covered in water, okay? Clay Township, most of Clay Township will be covered in water, and then on the right, you'll see that there's a bunch of flooding in Port Huron as well. But what's important for Harson's Island is that five-seventy-eight-two and above, so five-seventy-eight-two, five-seventy-nine, Harson's Island is flooded out. You can expect that we'll get to five-seventy-eight here fairly soon, by the middle of, by the middle of June, end of June.
Justin, that's five-seventy-eight-two, then?
No, so that's five-seventy-nine, but I'm just, it stepped down just a little bit. I didn't redraw the slide for the show, but basically, you would see, Harson's Island would still be full of water, but some of that flooding in Clay Township would be sliced down, it would be closer to M-twenty-nine at that point. It would still be flooded out, though. I can bring it up live in a minute, if you'd like to see it. So, some notes, this basically is the Weather Service's explanation on why Harson's Island gets pounded all the time when you get the northwest, or the southwest winds, and also why the river side, the south channel side gets hit by the east winds. Everybody here already knows that, but when we get a southwest wind, it pushes all that water across the lake, and you get a two-to-six inch rise, okay? We're all pretty aware of that, right? But they put it into words on why that happens. The other reason that this is important for us is, I get a phone call before we put a flood alert out, a flood watch or warning out, and basically, from like three weeks ago, I could have just left a flood warning out from here until October. But that doesn't do me or anybody else any good, because it would desensitize everybody. So what I've decided is, we are going to put them up and down when it's appropriate, when there's a reason to do it that shows a big water movement, okay? So when I see something that's going to raise it two to six inches, in a hurry, we're going to put a flood warning out to show, hey, there's something to get ready for, kind of like a thunderstorm warning, or a tornado warning. I want to make something happen when you guys, when our communities need to know that something important's about to happen, okay? Otherwise, you'll have a flood warning up for the next six months. And this talks a little bit about that mitigation that we talked about a minute ago. Back in the mid-eighties and early nineties, we were at that plus fifty-four inches, and that's what we talked about at major flood stage, and now we're at about plus sixty-two to be at a major flood stage. And that's due to those break walls, due to the much better building codes, due to better roads being built, and better drainage being built to drain those roads and keep them dry. So that's what we're talking about there. So, critical infrastructure impacted. So we talked about the things that are important to the county, the things that are important to me and at the state level, to keep safe, so that we can maintain communications, we can maintain critical services like sewage and water, to make sure that our humans are good, and we can keep people safe. These are the things that are important, that I'm trying to protect from my office. The county roads, right, I have to have the ability to evacuate people at the appropriate time, okay? Sewage treatment facilities, here's an issue we have. Our sewage treatment facility for your area can manage about two million gallons a day, okay? Right now, it's running, what, one-point-four, right?
Average three-point-five.
Well, that's terrible. So we know we can manage two million safely, we're running three-and-a-half million unsafely. This is a problem. We know when we flood out, it will go offline, and then we've, we're going to be in an environmental disaster, we're already going to be in a flood disaster. So we're working with our sewage treatment plant to try and figure out how to stop this infiltration issue, because it's a problem. Evidently, I need to make another call, because I didn't know it was that high. So, drinking water facilities. So obviously, drinking water is also the same water main that runs our fire hydrants, okay? We start popping off fire hydrants, I also lose drinking water. So I'm working with the water system folks to make sure that we don't lose fire hydrants, and if we are going to lose them, cap them off, so that I don't lose the entire drinking water system, okay? So that's important to me. Gas and electric, I talked to D T E the other day. They are not worried about losing the entire grid. One, if we lose the one D T E facility, the rest will take over, we all know that, but they will start turning off individual locations if they need to, if they start getting water inundation, to keep the rest of the grid online. So we did talk about how they'll manage that, and how we will track that situation. I guess we did have one or two houses that we had to turn off last week, because the house was flooded and then became a dangerous situation, so we are starting to track that right now. Gas, same thing. Obviously, we don't want to have gas leaks, because that starts explosions, and that starts fires, and you can imagine how that'll go. Public safety and infrastructure's easy, we got to keep our firehouses and our police stations up, to be able to service our customers. Cell towers, those are our critical communications, believe it or not, now, in this day and age. If we lose our cell towers, we basically lose our ability to keep in touch with each other, because I'm fairly certain most everybody in this room has a cellphone. It's also how we do our emergency alerting these days, right? For those of you that dealt with our tornado warning yesterday, how many people's phones went off yesterday for the tornado alert? A lot of people, right? So that's our I-Paw system, that's how we do our emergency alerting, that's one of the ways we do our emergency alerting, it's important. So we try to keep our cell towers up. Assisted living, we're working with the correct people to ensure we understand where all of our assisted living personnel are, that aren't actually in assisted living homes, because we do have visiting nurses and things like that, so we're dealing with that. Hospital's not really an issue right now, we don't expect any of our three hospitals to have flooding issues, but we do keep that in mind, and then D P W and EMS facilities as well. I left this up here, just if anybody's ever interested in how the county interfaces with the Public Act that talks about declaring an emergency, this is where it is, thirty decimal four-one-zero of the Public Act three-ninety of nineteen-seventy-eight. It's just how, what it means when I declare an emergency, and then what it means when the governor declares an emergency, so if you want to get smart on that, there it is. Public Act three-ninety of nineteen-seventy-eight. All right, so that's about it. That's kind of where we are right now. The magic number for the next two weeks is eight inches, okay? You can expect potentially eight more inches in the next couple of weeks. So now, it's your turn. Who's got questions? Because I know there's a ton of them.
Hey, Justin, I know it was going to come up.
Yes, sir.
There's been some reports from the Army Corps of Engineers, a discrepancy, you saw the report today.
Yep.
Where they're saying zero increase in the next three-and-a-half weeks.
So I saw that report this morning.
Put the lights back on.
I will.
So I saw that report this morning, which is immediately why I called them and talked to Patrick, who's their director for emergency management, and he said he was going to talk to Keith, but that his data said, and told him, that we should plan for eight more inches. So that's what I was told this morning.
That the Army Corps of Engineers said, plan for eight?
Yes.
Not the one that they...
Correct. When I talked to Patrick this morning, at, what was it, what time did I call him, Mike? What time did I leave your office?
Probably around ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty?
About ten-thirty, yeah.
At ten-thirty this morning, he said, plan for eight more inches, do not change your messaging, do not stop people from doing what they're doing, stick with it. Yes, sir?
I got a question. Most people on the island have separate fields.
Yes.
Want to get inundated, what do we do about waste disposal?
So I posed that question to the Health Department last Friday, and Steve, the Environmental Director for the Health Department, is getting a fact sheet put together as we speak. So what I will do is, I will get that to Artie. I don't have an answer for you on that. I'm not the health side, but that is an absolutely perfect question. So let me get back with the Health Department, and I will get that answer for you.
I was considering a port down my street for people, you know what I mean? Just writing a port down for my street, just in case people was...
Yeah, I don't think it's there yet, but I will get you the right answer.
Right on.
Yep.
Thank you.
What else?
It's a projection for it to go down after June.
So, let's flip back to it.
Yeah.
I mean, all I have is what they're telling me, so. So if five-seventy-seven is that black line right there, it looks like bottom end of it, five-seventy-six-ish by October, if you go to the green line.
They...
So somewhere between five-seventy-seven, five-seventy-six, eight, and five-seventy-five, six?
They're saying about, it's going to be high, seasonally high for at least six inches.
Like five, I would go five-seventy-six, somewhere in there, plus or minus six inches.
Any thoughts about next year?
So Patrick did talk to us about that during our meeting two Thursdays ago, and he said, listen, this could be the same thing again next year, you know, without knowing if it's going to be a record year or not. It literally depends on what the winner does up in Superior next year. And he said, "Listen, this could be the same thing again next year," you know, without knowing if it's going to be a record year or not. It literally depends on what the winter does up in Superior next year. So that's why we're where we are, is because they had two heavy winters in a row where Lake Superior froze over two years in a row, right? I think they had like a 94% or something like that freeze over in Lake Superior and it didn't get to evaporate like it should, right? And then they had a really heavy winter this year, so they got a ton of runoff and it didn't melt until I think like 10 or 12 days ago. Like that's when they finally finished the winter melt. And they had a ton of rain in the UP and in northern Michigan. So it's all a conflict of all those things.
So it could be for a few more years, nobody knows.
Well, I mean, I don't want to venture a guess. I'm not, you know, a hydrologist with the Army Corps. But he did say during our meeting, "Listen, this could be a practice event for what we do again next year." It all depends on what, you know, the winter does.
How high is Lake Superior right now?
I'd have to pull it up, but what I was told is it's 12 inches higher than they've seen it, so.
Over the norm or just this year?
Yeah, I'd have to pull it up, but he said it was 12 inches higher than they've seen it. That's what he told us.
Yeah, we've got to determine where we're going to be.
That's right.
Is there a scheduled release that's driving this eight inch rise?
So I don't have that answer. I don't know if there's some sort of scheduled release. What he said in his meeting is, "Listen, they can manage it one or two inches, but it's so far out of any sort of manageable capability that there's no way to manage the type of water we're talking about."
I just wondered, I mean, they're very specific about, yes, it will be eight inches. So something has to be driving...
No, I think that they're just forecasting, right? They're forecasting, they know how it's, the bell curve that it's on, right? And I use that because that's the best way that I can surmise it. But I think they're just forecasting it. I don't think that there's any sort of release going on.
So basically you're saying it's kind of a wet finger in the wind because it's like one day we're getting one set of numbers, tonight we have another set of numbers and the difference...
What I'm telling you is I made a call because I saw what I was shown this afternoon.
So how do we quantify what you're saying though? Do we have the option of making, I'm not calling you a liar.
You can call me whatever you want.
No, I'm appreciating what you're saying here, but it's like we're the people that are, you know, up to our ankles.
Well, I didn't...
In water, right? Yeah, so we're just trying to...
Welcome to come over afterwards. We can all have a beer. Yeah, I get it, right? You're looking for quantifiable numbers. I got that. I was too when I stopped at the police station and said, "Alright, let's talk about this. Let's figure it out." And I made the call and said, "Alright, Pat, we're looking at these numbers. What does this mean?" He goes, "I'm telling you, you need to plan for eight inches. That's what I'm looking at." So I can dig into it more tomorrow and see what they're talking about. I can call Keith, the hydrologist at the Army Corps and find out what the discrepancy is. But when the Emergency Management Director at the Army Corps is saying, "Plan for eight more inches," he hasn't lied to me yet, so I'm planning for eight more inches. Yes, sir.
Leave the sandbags for a good couple of years then really, right?
Well, I mean, they'll disintegrate, but you probably want to replace them, but I wouldn't get rid of them.
Leave the sand there and sandbag again next year or something like that.
Well, I would, we're going to have this conversation again and it's the same issue next year. But here's the thing, even in the winter, right? We know we're going to have higher than normal water and we know the ice is going to stack up on itself. And so we're going to be in a situation through the winter. We're going to be in some sort of situation through the winter. So we'll probably need to keep an eye on it. Yes, sir.
Is there a possible rest of mandatory evacuation down from the area?
So here's what I'll say. Every time I've ever done an evacuation, by the way, I was the Planning Section Chief for like six hurricanes, okay? And I was the Incident Commander for one. So every time I've ever done an evacuation, I've always asked people to leave first, right? So I would do that. We would do voluntary evacuations first and here's how the zones are going to go. Zone A is going to be Harsons Island. Zone B is going to be Clay Township and Algonack. And then Zone C is going to be Ira Township because it breaks down easy enough. But if we get to a certain point where water covers the entire island and vehicle traffic can no longer work, right? I can't get people out in vehicles. There's probably going to be a time where right before that happens and I can safely get everybody off the island, I'm going to ask for mandatory evacuations. Now mandatory evacuations doesn't mean I'm going to put everybody in handcuffs and drag them out of their homes when they tell me no, right? Mandatory evacuations mean I'm going to make the order and then it's your choice whether you stay or go. But if you stay, that means there are no services available for you anymore and you're on your own, okay? That's what that means. Yes, sir.
Some water level would trigger that.
So like I just said, there isn't like a, "Okay, we're at 578. We're good. I'm out of here." I'm not going to call it a water level. What I'm going to do is take an assessment and say, "It's no longer safe, in my opinion and in our decision-making group's opinion, to leave people on the island and not be able to respond to them anymore, right? Because I can no longer get people across back and forth safely. Vehicles can't traverse the island safely anymore. I can't get fire trucks to and from places safely. I can't get EMS back and forth safely." It's the time to make that call. Now that call is not a great call to make, right? It doesn't feel good to tell people they can't stay in their homes any longer. I get that. That's a tough call. But I will make it when the time is right. That's what we have to do. So that's a difficult call to make, but I will make it. Yes, sir.
Any emergency funds available? When does that ever come to play?
So here's how this works. That's a great question. So, you know, there isn't somebody writing a check to people saying, "Here's money to prepare your house," okay? What we're asking people do is to report damage as you get it. If your house is damaged, you report it and I'll give you the email address that you reported to. But there is no money available to prepare your house for damage, okay? To prepare your house for an incident. It's the homeowner's responsibility to prepare your house for potential flooding.
Is it the same commercial or does it change homeowner to commercial?
So for like getting a business ready or whatever? So it's your responsibility to get your business prepared as well. So what I'll ask everybody to do right now, if you have flood insurance, call your insurance provider. If you have homeowner's insurance, call your homeowner's insurance right now and talk to them about what you are insured for and what you aren't insured for. Today is the day or tomorrow, right? It's a little late today. Get prepared and understand your preparations, right? And it's also your responsibility to protect your homes, okay? Whatever you can do to get everything protected, get it up off the floor, if you have a second floor, move that stuff. If you can get it out of the way, get it out of the way. The time is now. Yes, sir.
What do you do with people who are handicapped?
So if you are...
I am prepared.
Yes, sir. If you are handicapped and you need assistance, let us know. Let Arti, let Chief Coach, let Chief Rose know and we will work that out. You have to let the leadership know and we will see what we can do to find people to help you, okay? We're not just going to say there's nothing available. If there's something available for you, we will figure that out. What else?
What do you do with large animals?
Yes, ma'am.
Large animal.
So this is an interesting one. So what are we talking about, large animals? Because like I made a comment the other day, we will find somebody that has some sort of tiger or something, right? Laugh, I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding. We had a hurricane where we literally had, I think, I don't know, it wasn't a tiger, but it was some sort of very exotic animal and we had to figure it out. So what do you have? A horse?
Horses.
Okay, so that's not, that's not, do you have a trailer for them? Okay.
They haven't...
We'll talk about it. We'll talk about it. Let me give you my card. And they're on the island. Do you think they'll travel at all well?
We're retired.
They're 20 something years old and they haven't been in a trailer ever.
Okay, alright. Well, what we won't do is we won't just leave them to fend for themselves. We will figure it out.
I mean, there's dogs also and guinea hens, the ducks and geese we know make it...
Yeah, they'll be alright. They kind of like this.
With only two.
The ducks, they're like, "Hey, is that an ark?" Yeah, okay.
Be a big dinner at John's.
Alright. Can you do me a favor? I'm going to give you two cards. Can you write your address on the back of the second one and give it back to me? Thanks. Alright, what else? Yes, ma'am.
How would we get updated information?
So updated information. So I think what I'm going to do, I've got a public relations team that we're working with. So I think I'm going to create something for Harsons Island because it's a unique community that is kind of separated from the rest of the...
The world.
No, it's, it's unique. No, no, it's unique and you have a different set of information needs, right? So I'm going to work with them tomorrow, I think, and we're going to come up with something. So I did this, so some of you may not remember, but when I was a lieutenant in the Coast Guard, I did all the ice breaking information and all the outreach for the island. I don't know if anybody ever remembers that, but I was the guy who would like reach out and communicate with all the islanders. And that was me, so. Yes, sir.
Well, so I was asking about like any available monies or anything. I think you were heading in a direction and stuff. Is there some stuff?
Yeah, so what will happen is I will declare an emergency at the appropriate time, right? It's not yet. And then basically we'll report damages and go through all that. And then the governor, she can decide when it's appropriate to potentially declare or not declare. And if she should declare, then money could become available, but it wouldn't be like she's going to write a check to homeowners or anything like that. That's absolutely not how it works. And then if this incident grows large enough because all of southeastern Michigan starts flooding because the water levels are going to be so high, it's just, listen, it's not just us, right? It's Macomb County, it's Wayne County, it's Monroe County, all the way down to the border. Basically everybody that's on the Great Lakes south of us, right? So if this becomes large enough, it could potentially become a governor declaration and then if it grows big enough, it could maybe become a presidential declaration. Don't count on that, but it could. You know, FEMA could become involved in some way, shape or form. But again, don't depend on individual assistance until a much later date if it becomes a presidential declaration. And even if it does become individual assistance through the president, they still don't come writing checks to people. Those are, you know, loans and things like that that come at zero or small interest, so.
But that doesn't happen until it's declared an emergency.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And it's under your emergency or the state's?
Well, again, that'd be way far down the road and that would be at least the state, if not the federal government. And it's usually the federal government. Yes, sir.
Where's all the money that people had paid for flood insurance and stuff? Where does that money go?
No, no, no. So if you have flood insurance, right? That's what I said right off the bat. If you have flood insurance, your flood insurance will kick in.
When I was in the San Clara Shores, they warned us back in 86. Everybody got panicked, bought the stuff. Then found out it doesn't cover nothing.
Well, that's why I said you'll have to talk to your flood insurance. If you carry flood insurance, talk to them tomorrow, okay? Yes, sir.
How about fast track on your seawall permits? Through the D-U-D Core.
Yep, so you'll have to talk to them.
But it's not fast?
It won't be fast. And we could potentially, once we declare an emergency, we could potentially talk to them, but that may not happen fast anyway because you can't really do construction in the middle of a flood, right? So...
Well, you can prepare for it now and you could get the permits.
Yeah, so here's the thing, right? If one neighbor puts one in quick and a neighbor five doors down puts one in quick, the other seven people that are around you still don't have them. It doesn't matter. Everybody's going to flood.
Well, you're protecting your property.
I get that, but the other seven people around you aren't and it's still going to flood.
There are a lot of cases like his where he owns all three sides. And if he can't get a sea, if it takes them three or four months to get seawall permits, it's too late.
Yes, sir, but my point is, everybody from here to Toledo would all have to put it in at the same time or water's going to find the fastest route in and flood everything out anyway. Everybody on this island would have to put a seawall in or it's all going to flood anyway.
I've lost five feet of shoreline.
Since this started?
Sorry?
Since this started, you lost five feet of shoreline?
In the last, yeah.
In the last couple of months? So what I need you to do is report that as damage, okay? And we'll, so everybody write this down. The email to report damage is damage@stclaircounty.org.
Say it again?
Damage, the word damage, at stclaircounty, S-T, and then clara county dot O-R-G. When you start seeing damage to your home, okay? To your residence, not your garages, not any of that stuff, to your home, you need to report it, alright? Some people are like, "What do I do with all the tools in my garage?" That's not, that's your garage. There's no living in your garage, okay? So we've been saying for weeks, please move the stuff out of your outbuildings and get them off the floor. Get it out of there because it's not safe. The water's coming, okay? You've got to get it out of those buildings, period. If you need to get a pod and have it brought in so you can load all that stuff out of there and then get it shipped to somewhere that's going to be dry, do that right now, immediately. Not yesterday, right now, right this minute. Get one ordered tonight online, okay? Because we cannot stop the water. It will only just keep rising. Yes, sir.
Let's remind everybody too on the WINS network.
Yep, yep. So I brought that stuff. So I brought some of this stuff. So our warning information notification system, so the county uses my office, uses this WINS system. Please pick up a brochure on your way out if you didn't pick one up on the way in, okay? We have the ability to notify you on everything, every piece of equipment that you have, cellphone, computer, telephone. Here's the thing. Do not click every box to notify you on every single thing or you will get 150 million phone calls every single day, about everything, okay? So please, just put on there that you want to be alerted for the emergencies only, alright? I'm serious about that because you will get called that there's like bugs in the sky, like the stupidest things, okay?
And this system will get to you much quicker than anything else.
Yes.
I can promise you that.
So yesterday, as soon as the weather, as soon as the National Weather Service issued a tornado warning, that system took 39 seconds to call 10,000 people. 39 seconds. I pulled the data this morning. And then it missed like 1,800 people, like they didn't answer, so it called them back in another 18 seconds. So all in all, it took us like one minute and 19 seconds to call 12,000 people. I'd say that's a win, right? It called them on the phone and hit them on their cellphones, like text messaged them. And it also takes, and you must like click a button or press one to say, "I answered," or it'll call you back. I'll take it.
The bad thing is you look at how many people are in this county and see how many people are actually signed up.
Yeah, there's 130,000 people in the county and we only have like 14,000 people that signed up. So I'm pushing it hard and I thank you for reminding me. I guess my brain said, "Hey, I brought the things, so I don't need to tell them." So, yeah, so that's, it's really important that you sign up and we will get the message to you, okay? That system also allows us to pick people geographically and select them. So if we have a tornado warning and you live here, but the tornado is going to hit Yale, I don't select you, okay? Because I don't need to bother you with it, so.
I had the system. It worked very well.
Good. Thank you. You're my, I'll give you the dollar 50 on the way out. That's your, that's my fee. Listen, here's the thing, okay? I said this in the beginning, my wife has started calling me the doom and gloom guy. I don't want to be the doom and gloom guy. I don't want anybody to think that I'm trying to scare or upset anybody. What I'm trying to do is make sure that we're protected, all of us. Because countywide, we're a big community and we're all in this together. So I will be here for whatever anybody needs, okay? So call me anytime. Your leadership in the township knows how to get ahold of me. I am 24 hours a day reachable, okay? And we will work our way through this together, alright? Fair enough? Any others, yes?
What would you think would be necessary, say, to get the governor to make the declaration to stop the no wake? Because you know, what I see is a lot of people can handle this, maybe six, seven, eight inches coming up. But when you get another 10 or 12 with the wakes coming in with these boats flying down, I mean, that's going to be more devastating than someone to flood.
So here's the thing. So what I would say is the water is already rising, right? But, and I reviewed a couple of submissions that Arti has sent me and people are sending us information and saying, "What are you doing about this no wake?" But it's also the same people that haven't protected their property at all, right? There's no sort of protection at all. And I would say you need to protect what you've got, right? Put something out there to stop it. Because I think countywide, there are five resources in the county. The sheriff has five boats right now along 130 miles of coastline. So if we do the math on that...
And I was saying, what would it take for people to, everybody to call the governor or whatever, to make that a no-wake zone?
So, we could make it a, we could make it a no-wake zone all the way around the state, right? But what does that do? If you don't have the resources to, to be there?
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is, if, you know, if it's publicized and whatever, and you could, I realize it's gonna be hard to enforce it, you know, it's like, I live in Western Bay there, and, you know, when I get three hundred boats coming in every weekend, you know, now it's the high waters, or, you know, I can handle the water now with the stuff I put up and whatever, but, you know, that extra ten, twelve inches that some of these boats push, it's gonna be, that's gonna be the problem.
The, the issue is, you don't make your, make regulations to make regulations. You make regulations that are enforceable, and this one wouldn't be enforceable. It just wouldn't be. It's, it's too much, right? So, we're, we're enforcing what is available currently. Well, let's not do that either. I mean, you know, so, and, and the priority right now is ensuring that we can respond countywide to flooding, right? Because ensuring people's safety in this flood response is their number one priority. That's, that's what the, the priority is right now. Yes, sir?
If, eh, you, you declare an emergency, do you have to have, should, shouldn't people take it, shut the electric off, shut the gas off?
So, so here's what, here's the answer to that. You should definitely shut off, as soon as the floodwater, as soon as the water rises to the level where it starts covering people's docks and outbuildings and things like that, immediately shut the water off to that. When the water reaches the inside of your house to the point where it starts, if you see any arcing and sparking, or if it covers outlets and things like that, one, you should evacuate immediately, and two, you should shut the power off on the way out. So that's when it becomes unsafe, and we start taking a look at, at when people should start leaving. So if it starts getting to that point, you should get out.
You shut everything off?
Yes.
If possible.
Yes. If not, get out, just leave them, we'll, we'll get it on the way by. Okay? Yes, sir?
Is the DQ issuing seawall permits?
So I, I don't have that answer, I'll check with you, or I'll check with them on that. I will send an email as soon as I leave here. Sir?
We have a newscaster on the island, I believe. Can we use him to maybe some special reports?
He did, he did one.
Maybe more often, though?
So I'm, I'm working with the press this week. I'm working with the press this week to, to get the news out even more. So I think between Artie and I and a couple other people, we are actively engaged with the press. We also engaged the press to do some wake stuff last week with them. That was one of the agreements we made with, at the sheriff's office last week, so, sir.
Yeah, when you get to that point, if you're one of the residents that the water's approaching to a safety point where it's, you know, impacting the mobility of the home?
Yeah.
And, you know, that person's just gonna handicap and repair it anyway, what is the best thing, a nine-one-one chief?
Yes, yes. Yeah. Any emergency at all, if you feel like it's an emergency, it doesn't feel right, call nine-one-one. Immediately, okay? That's what it's for. Yes, sir?
Is there an elevation that if you had it, would you be safe? In your mind? I mean, is it five-seventy-nine, five-eighty, five-eighty-five? Heaven?
So, um, yeah, I mean, I don't, we were talking about that a little today, I mean, where on the island would be a good, like, evacuation point or anything like that? I wouldn't wanna guess right now, but what a good elevation would be? I'd have to get back to you on that, we have to take a look at, at what that number would be.
I want you to do that.
Okay.
We're, I know, we're, the county's going around the road commission this week.
And they're stating things, yeah.
Stating and giving elevations of all our critical infrastructure, all our roads, so, I mean, it's gonna be dead nuts on, we'll know. Just by looking at elevations.
Wouldn't it be the point where you can't get on the ferry?
Yes, very much so, it would be.
That's gonna be another key issue right there itself.
Yeah.
I mean, they're doing their best they can to build it up, you know, right now, but if we imagine another eight inches or so on there, it's gonna be to the point where it's gonna become impossible.
So what I'm doing by the end of the week, this week, is you'll see one of our dive team hazmat team vehicles pre-stage at the, here at the fire station, that will be able to move people, and it won't be affected by floodwaters. It's a very, very large vehicle that we can load a lot of people in, so, and we're doing that to kinda be ahead of the curve a little. And one of our, one of our evacuation potentials is, if we can't have vehicles on the roadways anymore, we can at least use that vehicle and move people from a collection point to the ferry, and run the ferry back and forth with people on it. So, trust me when I tell you that we are, we are running this in our heads and, and talking about how do we evacuate people, and how do we do this safely and correctly? So this is not something we just came up with today. Yes, sir?
This, uh, the septic field, or septic tanks and that, is that gonna change as far as how they're supposed to be? Are they gonna be, like, I have an engineered septic tank and field, and so I'm at a five-seventy-eight, I think it was? I think that's what the code was then? Or is that all gonna raise now, or are we gonna raise them codes up?
Yeah, so I think, I think coming out of this, you're gonna see quite a few mitigation strategies. One of the things we're looking at is break wall height, right? Should we set a uniform break wall height throughout the county? Is that something we should ask the townships to do? Is there, is there mitigation?
They should have ladders every, people should have to have a ladder on that break wall too, I think.
Well, I think we'll, you know, I'm, again, I'm not saying, I'm just talking about the things we're talking about to potentially head this off in the, in the future, you know? Septic fields, is that something we need to look at? There's a lot of things we're, we're taking notes of right now, and this after-action report will be very thick, I'm sure. Sir?
Is there a place that people can go to volunteer the services?
There, there will be a, a volunteer center, reception center. We're trying to pinpoint where that will be to make sure it's safely out of the flood zone right now. So, um, one of the other things we're up against right now is the normal shelter areas are, are schools, and they're still in session right now. So we're, we're working on a couple of different points. One of them may be McMoran or the, or SE4's Fieldhouse, so, um, so we're trying to put those together as well right now. Sir?
What about roads in and out? How does it look for M-29s?
So M-29, I'm waiting on the report back, you heard Artie talk about, they're, they're getting elevations for M-154 and M-29 right now. We're trying to figure out which way out of M-29 might be the best way. Because a lot of our, our inside roads will probably flood out as well. So, we're getting that, I'll have that pretty quickly. And you'll see me publish that as well. Yes, sir?
Yeah, one, one thing, you know, yes, we understand it's a property owner's responsibility to protect their property, and do everything they can, but one of the things that's happened here in the last thirty years really is, the DNR, and it's a permitting process to put in a basement.
Sure.
And seawalls were not allowed. So that's why you see a lot of gaps in the teeth around here, because people are not allowed to do that. So what I'm kinda hoping is, we're gonna see a little bit of relief on that, and, and in the time period, pull it from it, I don't think everybody can get anything now in a couple of weeks, obviously.
No, and, and like I said, it's probably not safe to do construction in the middle of a flood either, right? So I can't speak to that, but that's just Justin saying, I don't know how much construction I'd wanna do when the water's as high as it is.
You were saying you're looking at this for mitigation in the future?
In the future, yes, sir.
Right, well, part of the problem right now is because, stopped all that, not you personally.
Right. Yeah, and, and again, I'm, we're just talking about lessons learned and what might be the right answer, so...
That's a good lesson.
Yep, that's good information. Yes, sir?
Two things. Probably we should evaluate the, putting some of these houses in there, the floor level, with, with, you know, lessons learned, and this'll be the third time in my lifetime. And second of all, for Artie over there, do we have a better place on the island, close to over here, that isn't in the wires or dumping?
Oh.
We can bring sand over regularly, for you.
That's dangerous.
The only reason we put it there, the township owns that property.
Right. But I ran into the, uh, last Sunday trying to put sand over here, I've only could get one load in with our trucks.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that, we can, I'm sure we can call up the summer.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find somewhere that we can have enough.
Yeah, 'cause I can send trucks over regularly instead of you trying to run it with that six-yard truck.
Thank you.
But you just gotta get out of the wires.
Yeah.
I'll bet our farmers hired any place almost on the island.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking for elevation.
Yeah, I'll, let me talk to the road commission, so they're the ones shooting all the elevations, so, you're talking to, you're talking to a criminal justice major with a emergency management master's degree, so, you got me on that, you know what I mean?
I'm just a dumb farmer.
Well, hey, nobody's dumb in this room, so... All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I got, I got two questions.
Okay, yes, sir.
Since we're talking about some rather dire consequences here relative to evacuation and, and protecting our property, I guess I'm gonna direct the, the question to the sheriff's representatives who are here. You know, what generally comes after evacuations, unfortunately, is looting. Are you considering, are you considering what to do to protect? This is a very unique environment here, in that you can't just shut off the roads, you gotta shut off the waterways.
No, we've, we've talked about that with Supervisor Bryce, and we'd work with, with Mike through Assistance Department if that was the case.
And the second question I have, and this is to the DNR representatives, is there a power that you can shut off all the boat ramps? You know, the North Channel Boat Ramp? The, the Boat Ramp at New Baltimore? In other words, no boats going on to the lake? Can you shut off marinas from having access to the lake because of, I mean, we shut off roads because it's unsafe for people to drive. Can you, the DNR, close marinas on Lake St. Clair because it's unsafe for boating due to the shoreline, due to the residents, et cetera?
We, we should, if roads are shut down, it's because it's unsafe for the driver to be on the road.
Yes.
You know, the boats being on the water, it's not unsafe for the boat operator. Again, it's the damage that, it's the waste that they're causing, which is, is your concern as far as we're damaging your property. And that's where I'm gonna be working and coordinating with Lieutenant Reed here with the Marine Division, and we're gonna see what we can do as far as scheduling our officers for more coverage and to provide some more enforcement into these areas, to see what we can do with some of the traffic as far as we're operating at those higher speeds.
Okay, thank you.
Your, your first question too, we, we did talk about that last week, um, you know, that's why I said, if, if God forbid we have to evacuate an area, you know, we, we gotta stop a couple hooligans on a jumbo kicking people's doors in. And we have plans to, to secure the area, uh, the helicopters would be available to us, and, and, and more manpower and patrols, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
Artie, you know, they, earlier, they mentioned about no-wake zones. I was in the Coast Guard auxiliary for thirty-four years, I was retired. And I know that they have their boats, you gotta contact them to go through the process. And we used to have slow down, no-wake signs, and you had, the auxiliary used to do that. And, you know, they had the law enforcement authority, but they did that and made people slow right down. So maybe that's something you should look into.
Right, well, we, like I mentioned before, we, we're looking at getting creative, like putting a deputy on a fireboat, um, to get more propellers in the river, if you say, if you want, um, and, and that type of thing. And we're definitely doing a lot of brainstorming to, to increase the visibility. A lot of it's education, a lot of it, if you just got a flashing light, you know, people will see it and slow down.
I'm right here. Yeah, so, you know, things like the auxiliary, so I, I made a request to the Coast Guard last week to, to, you know, what's their schedule? They don't operate really on a patrol schedule, right? Not like a lot of other agencies. They get out as much as they can, and, and they're kinda operating a lot, you know? So I talked to the, the senior chief at the Port Huron Station, and, and they're gonna be underway just as much as they always are anyway. So, um, they're, they're gonna be out a lot, and I think they obviously don't write citations for wake enforcement, right? Because it's not a, it's not a federal statute. But what they will do is they will enforce, you know, they will get out and, and educate people and let them know, and if there's a, just a gross situation, they will get ahold of Lieutenant Reed's people and bring them over and, and take care of it that way. So I think, I think that's a force multiplier, right? And, and I know Border Patrol and Air and Marine, they're out there on their boats as well, and they're gonna do the same thing. I talked to Matt Donaldson last week with the Border Patrol, and his guys are gonna kinda do the same thing. If it's some sort of gross misconduct with, with, with that situation, they'll call Paul's staff as well. So, um, so the word's been passed, we, we kinda made that promise to Artie in the meeting, and, and we've gotten the word around to all the, all the federal partners, so, that's it.
One last question, this is for me. In, in the past, when we've faced any kind of emergency, we always had the full cooperation of the Coast Guard in any kind of evacuation. Since nine eleven, that's all changed. One of the things the kids used to look forward to was ice jams and rides in the Coast Guard cutter to school. Like I said, nine eleven, that all changed. So now, if, you know, heaven forbid we get in a situation where we do have to do a substantial evacuation, um, the ferries, I, they're gonna do everything they can, but, you know, there's two docks. It would be a lot more seemingly advantageous if the Coast Guard was allowed to participate in the evacuation. Is that gonna be possible?
Yeah, so, just so happens to be a retired Coast Guard commander standing in front of you right now, so I would say that they might be interested in, in taking part in our flooding incident.
Okay, but also as a retired officer, I know that I gotta follow the chain of command.
Yeah, yeah.
The chain of command right now says you cannot do that.
No, it doesn't. It says they're absolutely...
No civilians on a ship of war.
Oh, you're talking about moving people back and forth?
Yes.
No, 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 if we're doing, if we are in a state of emergency, they will absolutely be available to assist. I don't know where we heard that from. But if, they're gonna be part of the IMT when we, when we stand up, so I don't know where that came from.
Well, it came from the experiences we've had almost every year. That's where it came from.
If we're in a state of emergency in a flood response?
No.
They used to shuttle...
Yeah, no, I know, I, yeah, I got it. The Bramble used to sit there and move...
And great cookies.
Yeah, so, um, yeah. If, when we, when we stand up the full IMT, the Coast Guard will be involved because we're gonna need them to help move people.
I assume that, but I don't like assuming that.
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll be involved.
Good man.
I've already, I've already spoken with them. They're gonna be involved, they're, they've already offered up their, their, basically their ice rescue gear, their boats, their inflatable boats, to move people if we need them, we're already all set.
Agreed.
Yeah. Sir?
So, the reporting that Dan, you said like he had five feet of beach taken away, but then you had said only if it's damaged to your house, I thought.
No, no, so, what I said is, report all the damage. What will probably be captured is the residence, the home, but I need everything reported, okay?
Like how minor?
Report it all, we'll send damage assessment teams out, but I need everything reported.
So that you can get records and see how bad everything is?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Because, like, land loss might be something that would be captured differently than other things.
Take a picture.[1709.73] Take a picture.
Yes. Take pictures of everything.
Yes. Good point. Pictures.
Thank you.
Pictures of everything. Okay?
Any questions for the DNR people or the?
What else?
Paul Reed? We got a meeting we got.
Yeah, that was good. Thanks, everybody.
As you can see, we've been busy. Give a few minutes for everyone to clear out. Then we'll continue. Okay, bring it back to order. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings on soil removal permits. We did have one letter sent. Someone want to read it?
I'll make a motion to open the soil removal public hearing at eight 11.
Motion to support. All in favor of opening up the public hearing at eight 11, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Join the pose. Okay, motion carries. Next item, we have a public hearing for the soil removal permits. We do have one letter that was sent in for record.
Dear Clay Township Board, we're writing in regards to our soil removal permit. We have been applying and receiving our soil removal permit since 1996. We pay all the fees, insurance, and fill out applications every year. In the last few years, there have been hauling in the Clay Township and Harrison's Island area from locations that do not have and have not applied for a soil removal permit. Why is this? Do we have, do we not have to apply anymore for this permit? And if so, why are we still collecting our money? And what are we, why are we carrying the insurance that you require? We are not a large operation like others that are hauling and we barely haul enough to cover the expense of these fees. We do it because there is a need for this service and it helps John doing something that he is capable of doing. Looking forward to a reply. Sincerely, John and Donna Horvath, owners of Seven Acre Farms.
Okay. Do we have any other public comments for the soil removal permits? There are none. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
For the soil permits?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to close the soil removal public hearing at eight 13.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next we have a public comments. Any public comments? Let me get the mic out here. Any public comments?
All right. All right. Lately, lately I've been, people have addressed me about the, the activity that's going on next door to my place by Matthew Mullen and on composting in the township. Is there talk of reducing the size of the acreage you have to have for a composting operation? The planners stated that in the zoning that we're supposed to have 80 acres is the first line. And I don't think we should make it any smaller. I think it should be actually made larger because it is a real nuisance. We've dealt with the township store quite a few years and it is hard to control the smell.
I, I can tell you, it's in front of the public or the planning commission right now. And I don't know what they're talking or, is that, is tomorrow night?
Yeah, Wednesday night.
Or Wednesday night?
It's on the agenda.
On the agenda, the planning commission. And that actually goes to the planning commission more, not us.
Just open for discussion.
Just open up for discussion. I knew that they were looking at it.
It's got to go another day.
So, yeah.
Where is that meeting? On mainland or?
Mainland.
Wednesday night, seven o'clock.
Yeah, because it, it is hard to control the smell.
Right.
And there's a place over on 26 and Beachway that's close enough to bring the stuff to. And you get within two miles of that place and you can smell it. We don't need that in a small little parcel.
Right.
Other than that, thanks.
Thank you. Welcome to come to the plan.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Any other public comments?
Thank you. Roman Breck, Harpsburg Island, 202 Williams. Okay, I'm gonna start by saying there's some good people on the board and there's good people in the building department. And Sid Brown's a really good person. I worked with him quite a bit on building my house. Worked with Mike Crass and the new lady Cindy. I don't know her full name. She's, I think, the new board or new, I don't know what she really does. You know, Art?
Billy Coordinator.
Okay. Anyway, and Patty, past Patty and, you know, bless her heart. All right. And I trust a lot of them. There's a couple people on the board that are missing that I was trust pretty good. But there's, what I'm here about, not only to thank a little bit, but I had troubles with chickens coming in my yard. And, and they've been coming in the yard for over nine months. And don't seem like the police department could handle it, whatever problem there was. I had two different officers. The only one that really is good now, Officer Burley, he's a pretty good officer. And the new, new fella, our new rookie, he's a pretty good fella. And Officer Dowell got yanked off the case because whatever reasons. He told me though, he told me himself, he took pictures of the damage that got, was being done and next to my wall and stuff. In fact, Joanne Shirkey come over there, looked at the, the problem and seen what was going on. And then that, that also I wanted to find out if Joanne talked to any of her board members, colleagues, and told them that you came over and looked and seen some of the damage. And I was just wondering. You want to answer? I was just wondering if you talked to any of the colleagues about it. It's been a real hassle to me. I got pretty upset a lot of times emotionally. And I've been here to several meetings. And this ain't what I like to do. I threw my hockey stick down to pick up a fishing pole. And I love my fishing and hunting, but every time I go up north fishing or hunting or come back from there, the damn chickens would be in my yard again. Well, after eight months, and Artie, you don't have a wife, but I got a wife that don't want them chickens digging up her, her flowers and digging the septic field because she's got bushes in the roots all winter long. I had to keep going up, or before winter and keep filling it in with leaves and so it didn't kill a lot of the plants. We're gonna find out when you get that wife, you're gonna have to obey a little bit. And you're gonna find that out.
I think it's already too late for that.
Well, I'm telling you, it made a good thing. And it, and I lost some sleep over some of the comments this kid made. And, and I always went back to Artie. And Artie, you got a phone pal, judge slash attorney slash LLC, whatever his lot is over there, and threw in that septic field under a sly deal and all that. It wasn't, no permits pulled. There was no permits pulled for that place. And having that kid live there, and it always went back to him. And I had to put up with it. It hurt me. I had, I lost lots of sleep from this kid. And you go by there now, it's all cleaned up, granite, but all the windows are broken in that place. That he broke all the windows. Officer Dowell said that the kid told, told him that somebody chopped a hole in the roof. Officer Dowell said, "Did you chop a hole in this roof? Would any, anybody down this street, do you think they would chop a hole in the roof?" Who would chop? Who to ask me? Well, I don't want to deal with that. I should have never had to deal with it. I called the police in the first place. It should have been taken care of. It didn't for nine months. And I'm letting you know, I was very upset. And, and I'm done. Okay? And I hope that the matter's over with because it's, it looks like it. Thank you. Thank you.
Why don't you give Mike that other mic?
I want to respond to this real quick so that everybody here understands where the police department's coming with this. First and foremost, this whole issue is not a police matter. Was never a police matter. Let me, let me speak. This is a matter of code enforcement, which the police department does not handle. That is handled through our building department. Once we started seeing that issues were not being taken care of.
Nine months.
And weren't being taken care of in a fashion that they should have along with. There were some employee issues and the loss of some employees. At that time, the police department stepped in and said, "Let's see what we can do."
Did you fire, did you do anything for that kid and some of the things he's done?
Okay, sir, he did nothing criminal. We can't handle criminal actions. That is private property. Okay? We can enforce criminal actions. Okay, now going back to this, we stepped in because we seen there was a problem. They had a vacancy that was in the code enforcement and said, "Okay, let's see what we can do." Well, after we stepped in, the young man was removed from the home. He was sent somewhere else living. We figured the problem was handled. Next thing we know, lo and behold, he shows back up. Well, at this point, we have to start documenting everything we do so we can start a case against him. It was which we have already done.
Two days before Christmas, I handed you the thing.
You don't have the floor. You don't have the floor.
But I handed you the thing.
You don't have the floor.
Let me finish. We had everything we had to do on our end, which is something that in all reality, we shouldn't have had to gotten involved in the first place. But due to things that were going on in the township, it was one helping off the other to try to figure this out. Long story short is, young man ended up coming back. We had to build our case against him. So it was something that would be in the purview of the police department, which is what we ended up doing. At this current time, we have charges that have been sent to the prosecutor's office regarding this case. Meantime, young man has moved out of the home. The chickens are out of the home. Everything's out of the home. So the thing that I would like to hear is that this officer didn't do this or this officer didn't do this. You don't know what's being done behind the scene. And sometimes you, what you have to understand is, these things move slow. We can't just go over there and say, "Hey buddy, you're out of here." It doesn't work like that. It's no different than if someone moves into your home. There's an eviction process that has to take place that has to be done through the courts.
At what point can this kid say, "Yes, he's directed a question towards me. He directed a question to me."
You don't have the floor.
He directed a question to me.
No, he did not.
Yeah, he did.
You don't have the floor.
Like hell he didn't, Artie. What I want to assure you is, we have done absolutely everything that we can do in our purview as a police department to try to mitigate this problem. And that's what we have done. And unfortunately, with us stepping into this, what we haven't gotten is, okay, gratitude. What we've gotten is, well, you didn't do enough. We can only do so much. And what you've got to understand is, police departments handle criminal matters.
This kid said.
We handle criminal matters.
I'm sick of the neighborhood. I'm ghetto and I'm gonna start capping. So what is that?
That is not a criminal action. That is something that we document and that we follow up on. If things continue at that point, then we go through and we build a case from there. If I sat there and I went out and I tried to arrest every person that made a comment about somebody, we would have no time to do anything. It has to be a criminal matter. I understand that, that things get upsetting, they get frustrating. But we handle criminal matters only. Civil matters, we will try to step in and mitigate and try to basically referee if we can, to try to, to bring a resolution to a conflict. That's all we have the authority to do. And anything that's civil nature. And the problem with this young man is, everything was a civil nature.
Psychotic.
Okay? And I understand that. And that's why we got involved because we did not want to see anything escalate. And that's why we did everything we could. And let's understand, the man that owns the place is not a dummy.
Yeah.
Okay? He's an attorney. The, the place is put in the LLC for a reason. And that makes our job even that much harder because now we're fighting the courts even harder because we got somebody that knows all the loopholes. But I want to assure you, our department has bent over backwards and we have done a lot behind the scenes that you don't know.
Absolutely is doing a very good job.
And Supervisor was reporting to me on a daily basis with this.
Well, you know, it was a little bit late.
Okay.
I agree.
A little bit late.
Well, this is only happened in the last month.
Yeah. It's a process. The process took, went through and the person is gone, the chickens are gone. The place is almost cleaned up 100%. It's still, we still have a lot more work to do there.
Thank you.
Any more public comments? Hearing none. Moving right along to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of, it says May 8th. It's a correction. I should say May 6th, 2019. Check reports. Communication, there were two notes for the police department that were thank you notes. Assessing, requesting a tablet-based mobile assessment course for $35.
Support.
Okay, motion to support. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying yes or aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Next is my supervisor's report, if I can find it. It's really not that long because I've been doing most of the time, like 95% of the time with high water. I did want to report that the Colony Main Project isn't still in full swing, working on the final stages. I'm not sure if they'll, it'll be close if they finish before their deadline, which is, is it June 15th or?
June 15th.
June 15th. But I, I know they're having some issues with high water also. And we're watching closely with, to any, I'll add on to chargebacks. We meet every couple weeks to review what's, if there's any, any, any surprises in that project. Anchor Bay Bridge, the second bridge replacement has started. It's now a one, one lane bridge. I haven't heard any issues with that. I think that's going, going as planned. The DDA, we met last week, they're rethinking the sidewalk. They're, they're, they're putting in a sidewalk slash bike path along Fruit Road. And originally, they were going to actually try to do an acquisition of property on the outside of the ditch. But the DDA had met and they're rethinking the whole project to filling in the ditch and doing a sidewalk, a five foot wide cement sidewalk along that. Just want to report that to the, to the board. Let's see. On the island, we've been doing the gravel haul for all the stone roads. We got all but gourd done. Actually, we're gonna need some more stone. We're anticipating a freighter coming in soon with a bunch more road mix. And I think we're, we're actually gonna try to get two loads delivered because the county has locked in for three years their, their rate on stone. And it's up this year. And the reason being, we're trying to get two. Next year, it's gonna be a lot more. So we're gonna try to actually get two loads, two freighters bringing in stone here for the island. Oh yeah, the County Blueways Trail is sponsored by a two hour paddle. It's on May 30th. We'll be leaving the DNR launch at the North Channel across from Kroger's. And I believe it leaves at five and we're anticipating during the Russell Island loop getting back around seven. And we're encouraging dinner at Catch 22 for all the survivors afterwards, if there are any. And also on May 29th, the day before, we're doing our, our first slow roll bike tour. It's one of six in the township. This one's leaving from Clay Township Park. We're gonna start gathering around six and leave at 6:30. And again, that's about a two hour bike ride, slow roll. You know, we're riding slow and going through neighborhoods. I don't have the exact course just yet. But we did one last year. It was very popular. We had about 75 people. I had all different kids and all, all different people of all ages were there and participated. And we thought we're gonna do six. We do have one that's gonna be scheduled on the island in the middle of the summer. I'll, I'll get the, the dates for those. And I did want to mention too, that last Saturday was our St. John's Marsh cleanup. It went great. We had over 75 volunteers. I wanted to thank Mount Clement's Glass and I wanted to thank Mount Clemens Glass and Mowing Madness for coming out, and also the St. Clair County Sheriff's for bringing some inmates to help out, and Clay PD and Water Department, and we had a bunch of school kids, that was good to see there. The, two weeks from now is the Clay Cleanup Weekend. Saturday, June 1st, we'll be on the mainland, behind the Water Department, bring all your stuff, junk I should say. And on the islands, we're gonna be June 1st and 2nd at Brown's Field. We do have electronic cycling on Saturday from ten to three. So we'll have an electronic recycler to safely get rid of all your stuff, and if you, on the island, it's dropped off, we'll transfer it over to the mainland. The actual truck will be on the mainland. And then again, we got all kinds of rec programs going on, and if you want in details, call our building department, or like us if you're on Facebook, Clay Township Parks and Recs. That's my supervisor's report. Moving right along, we have new business. Parks and Rec requests local millage distribution. This is a dearly thing we have to pass, and, and they will give us a lot of, it's basically a twenty-five percent kickback from our Parks and Rec millage, based on, it's not based on value, it's based on population, homesteaded population. And this year, what are we looking to get back on this?
Forty-one thousand ninety-eight dollars.
Yep, where can I see that? Oh, next page. Forty-one thousand. It's gone up some, but I always argued, we pay our taxes based on value, and they give it back to us based on homesteaded population, not on value, but.
I'll make a motion to submit the 2019 request for local millage distribution. Support.
Okay, motion to support. Any discussion on that? Hearing, oh, we gotta do a roll call for.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilden?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a request to purchase office computers, five of them. You want to take that away, Cindy?
I did. I think the printout, printout I supplied was the cheapest that we had found. Mike also tried looking up some pricing. So as of this point, I think overall, we're gonna need nine of them, but this budget area wanted to do five. So I'm looking for the board to approve four thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. So I will motion to approve the office computer purchase for four thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Support.
Motion to support. Reason we're doing this too, because the life of, what is it, 2007?
Yes, their end of life this year.
End of life, no longer supported, and we have nine computers from 2007 on. So we have motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next we have DPW utility trailer purchase. So we're moving lawnmowers and other equipment along, around. John's, he got three quotes, and he's recommended we buy, or we get the cheapest one from US Twenty-Seven Trailers.
Where's US Twenty-Seven Trailers located?
Oh, God. I don't know.
I know where it's located.
St. John's.
Yeah, St. John's, Michigan.
Yeah, how far away is that?
Yeah, about two hours.
No, we're not doing it local, because I just saw. Huh? Who sells the trailer?
Grace had it for forty-eight, I think.
Grace would be the nearest.
Eight hundred dollars difference. That's an eighteen by.
The St. Clair Trailer don't sell like that?
I'm sorry?
St. Clair Trailer, when Grasset don't sell?
Uh, not an eighteen by seven, no.
They gonna deliver it?
Um, I'm sure for price they would, but not for that price.
So I guess, is it worth eight hundred bucks to go to St. John's? Is what we're talking about?
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion?
Put on motion to approve the DPW utility trailer for four thousand eighty-three dollars.
Okay, motion to support. Any more discussion?
Which one are we going with?
The one for four thousand and eighty-three dollars. Okay, motion to support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a bid for some asphalt work to repair where we had some waterline damage, repair the roads along N-29, and it comes to two thousand dollars. That was a lower bid. We had asphalt limit at thirty-nine seventy-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the road patch for two thousand dollars, coming out of line item five nine one dash seven four seven, from the Martin Asphalt Company. They were the low bid.
Support.
We have support, and they are located in Clay Township. We've used them in the past quite a few times. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of two thousand dollar, approving two thousand dollar quote for asphalt repair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have a vehicle purchase for the DPW, a truck and plow, as we talked about on our budget workshop, that is needed, and we're gonna have it budgeted. We order it now, because it takes about, what, three, two, three months to get. It will be, it will be delivered next year's budget, so.
No, this is for current.
Oh, that's right, this is for current. We got room in the budget for it. Actually, plenty of room.
Will be here in time?
It will, it's actually in stock.
Oh, good, better yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the truck snowplow purchase, which is through LaFontaine Chrysler, thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And there's also a Michigan Mydeal bid, which is typically the lowest price we've been getting on that.
Correct.
Support.
Okay, motion to support, and a brand-new pickup with a plow for thirty-five grand. It's pretty good.
What do we do with the old one?
Um, we'll probably auction that off.
And with the plow?
No, that one does not have a plow, the one over three five seven.
Okay, so we're getting another truck with a plow?
Correct. And this will become our primary plow truck, the one we use currently, is a one-ton duly, and I would prefer to keep that as backup plow, as opposed to the primary plow.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilden?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, the police is looking at buying some computers.
I believe the issue with the police department is also the Windows 2007 end-of-life.
Yep.
Yes, and these are mobile in-car computers.
Yep, they're mobile, they're right for the car, and they're, they're three refurbished computers, and normally they're about five thousand dollars a piece.
Yeah, two, four, and five.
And these come with a three-year warranty, and the unit price is nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. So substantial savings.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the computers for the police, the docking station, line item two oh seven dash seven forty-two.
Support. No docking station.
No docking station.
But you were right on the line.
Yep. We're buying, we're buying three laptop computers for the cars, so.
Support anyways.
Okay. Okay, we have motion, and we still have support. Any more discussion?
Who's gonna be, so we're going from getting 2007 into like, we have computers in the offices, computers on the police cars, and the training for that new software.
Well, we've already been running 2010 in a lot of our computers. We just haven't done, because the computers have been, you know, working so-so. They're computers that we know we've been having to replace, but we're waiting till the last minute, basically. And that's where we're at right now, is now that seven's phasing out, that now's, now's time pretty much, we think we need to do it, so.
Well, my point is, we'll start really training in that 2010, you know?
Well, I've been using it now for, since it came out, so.
I hate it.
You know, I, it takes a lot to get used to.
They hide sevens. They hide things in it. All right, any more discussion on the purchase of laptop computers from the police department? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have police camera docking station. These are for the body cams, and they, they need docking, a docking station to charge them when they're off, not in service with the police officers. So I'll entertain a motion.
I can do that now, because I tried to do it a few minutes ago. I'll make a motion to purchase the camera docking station for the police cameras for fourteen hundred dollars, line item two six five dash four oh one.
Support.
Okay, motion to support. Any more discussion? Hey Chief, what do you think your laptops in service?
Uh, I just got them in last week. We're finishing up some things on our policy form, and G-Tech, the manufacturer, we were scheduled on the 29th for them to come out and do training with them.
Okay.
So fairly quick here, we're about there, and the reason this docking station came into play was, we had ordered one, thought it was gonna be enough, because we thought we were gonna house everything inside as far as storage-wise, but we ended up going to cloud, as you know. So this also uploads everything in the cloud, once they're docked. So that's why we had to double, double up the space.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of purchasing the docking stations for body cameras for fourteen hundred dollars? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a soil removal permit for blue water materials. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for blue water materials. Support.
Okay, motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a soil removal permit for Silent Acres Farms.
Make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for Silent Acres Farms.
Support.
Okay, we have motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And next, but not least, I have a work order for replacing culverts at Holland and Starville. The replacing, actually, we, we're gonna remove a failing twenty-four-inch culvert that's just north of Holland on Starville, install a forty-two-inch by twenty-nine-inch culvert, ninety-six foot long. And that's actually gonna replace two other eighteen-inch culverts that, that go across the Holland to the Swartout County drain. And there's a lot of water that goes through there, and it backs up, and we're gonna make a lot of people happy, because it's definitely bottleneck and draining. And then there's gonna be some ditching done, so it's very much needed. I know we've been looking at it for about a year or two, and since we're gonna be paving Starville very soon, you don't want to pave a road and then tear it up to put a culvert in, so that's why we're doing it now. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the culvert replacement at Starville and Holland for thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Support.
Okay, motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilden?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Board member comments? You got anything?
I do. I wanted to congratulate Bonnie Campbell in our office. She completed her MCAT certification, so congrats to Bonnie on that. And I would like to see the board at some point to sometime soon revisit our soil removal permit process, because I think Silent Acres brought up some very good points.
Yep, I agree.
That's it. Mark?
I agree with everything that Cindy said. I'd like to thank Chief Coach John, the rest of the staff here from the administration building, especially the St. Clair University staff, and. Wear boots.
Harsons Island tennis shoes, huh? I would just like to say, thank Jeff for coming here and giving all that valuable information for Justin.
Justin just called you, yeah. That's a freedom store.
To give, to give all the information to the people that on Harsons Island that attended this meeting, so thank you very much.
Kristi?
I just want to thank everyone for coming, and I also want to say we've received a lot of calls for people that need help. So if you're able-bodied and you're able to help your neighbors, please help your neighbors protect their property.
Well said. That's it, I mean, and to talk about the high water again, that's been consuming my job quite a bit. It's time for neighbors to come together. I see it a lot, like five, six neighbors get together, have a sandbag party or whatever, and help people that can't physically do it themselves. And that's really, in any emergency, you know, they'll say, in any emergency, you know, wide scale, we're on our own for seventy-two hours, you have to, neighbors have to help neighbors, and you be, be watchful of what's going on in your neighborhood. Am I right, Justin? I mean, it's, it's so important, and let's face it, we're a close knit neighborhood, so. Yeah, and, and I said this in the beginning, you know, I'm sure a lot of us will come together and help other people out during this, and like I say, we've been busy thinking, trying to answer all the what-ifs, and, and, you know, just brainstorming, okay, if this happens, what can we do, or if that happens, what can we do. I feel very prepared, and like I say, you know, I pray for the best and prepare for the worst, so hopefully someone will pull the plug and it just starts draining, so. That's all I have to say. And you know, and the other thing too, we got a lot of positive things going on too. I just actually received an email, I gotta get back to work, they did approve, the governor signed our grant to get the park, the kayak property for, the property for the kayak launch. So I gotta get busy and send them some documents, and hopefully we'll be able to set a closing date soon for the township to buy the property. So that was good news, so. Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
Done.
Support.
Support, all in favor. Thanks for coming, everybody.